Good evening. It's 6:30. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We could all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have a moment of service to honor our fallen military. Thank you so much. You may be seated. Kristen, has roll call been taken?
Yes.
Chief Sutter, would you do us the honors, please?
Scott Sutter, Chief of Police. Adam Young, City Planner and Zoning Administrator.
Kristin Kenyac, City Clerk.
Ellen Glass, City Manager.
Jerry Lee, City Council.
Pam Howes, City Council.
Mike Gilder, City Attorney.
Liz Armstrong, Mayor.
Brad Dick, Mayor Pro Town.
Tom Hicks, City Council.
Brenda Simon, City Councilor.
And I would like to excuse Denise Miller, who is absent tonight. Moving on to special presentations, we have a transportation discussion by Mr. Ed Benning, General Manager and CEO of the Mass Transportation Authority, or MTA.
Madam Mayor and City Council, as you just said, tonight we welcome Ed Benning, the General Manager for MTA. Mr. Benning is going to provide us an update tonight for all transportation initiatives. Looking forward to that. And shortly, also additionally, shortly after we actually took over the management of LOC, we engaged with MTA on different various transportation efforts. We have an active grant right now that we're hoping that will come through eventually on our own transportation, more specific to LOC, and we engaged on potential trolley services in conjunction with our neighboring, the city of Fenton. So, thank you for being here tonight. I'm looking forward to hearing from you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. For many of you that I haven't met in the past, I've been at MTA going on 46 years. And so, I tell, I just came out of meeting with my staff and I reminded them, today you drive, tomorrow you ride. Make sure it's a good ride. I'm making sure it's a good ride for me. And, but what I really want to talk to you about is what's happening in our industry. You've been very supportive. This community's been very supportive. We have our challenges at the state level and federal level. At the state level, today, they don't even have a budget. And there's no likelihood right now that on October 1st, they'll have a budget. Many systems will shut down. We are not in a position where we'll shut down, but obviously that will hurt our organization and many. And right now, what's happening in the legislature is there's a lot of discussion between roads and other funding sources, one being public transit. There's been everything from removing all funds, putting all the roads, to let's make sure public transit's taken care of because so many people need the service. And so, we're working through that and working with the legislature. Same thing's going true in Washington. And there's so much on pause there that we have to kind of wait and see what happens. If I were to ask them today, if you gave us vehicles, would it be electric, hydrogen, propane, or compressed natural gas? I can't get a straight answer. But our whole fleet has been converted away from diesel. We were buying over 3 million gallons a year. Today, we're at 30,000. Soon, no diesel. All diesel will be gone. We have a fully alternative fleet of vehicles. That's good for the community. It's good for the people that use the service. At the same time, you know, we're really proud of it. But what's happening in our organization today is that we recognize that we need to work with every jurisdiction. We need to work with you and every other jurisdiction to determine what kind of services you need. What's going to work well for your community? And that's why I came up today, is I really want to talk to you about the reason that we're buying trolleys, the reason we're doing some of the things we're doing. It's going to be all about working with you to plan service that meets your needs in your community. Instead of having this big macro service that may or may not work for you, we really want to work with you and partner with you, determine what kind of services we can provide that better meet the needs of the city of Lyndon. And, you know, I think we're going to be extremely successful at that. In many areas today, what I'm hearing, and even in our neighboring Lansing, they have a $12 million deficit next year. What I'm hearing there is they intend after next year to cut service and to cut employees. We're not taking that road. Our road is one, let's figure out how we can transform service. We have been extremely successful, and you may not even be aware of this, but at the MTA, because of your support, our rides-to-wellness service, which is a medical service that is provided within 30 minutes of your call, is the number-one medical service by a public agency in the country. You should be really proud of that, in the country. We have all kinds of awards. But it's all about doing things different. And I will tell you that I've been invited. I've sat with the legislature and they've asked me the question, you know, who came up with these ideas? I said, "It's what we need. It's what we need for today's world." We have seniors, 20,000 seniors a day turning age 65 for the next 17 years. Think about that. Not only is it medical needs, but there's also going to be those that might have a disability also. So, we have to think about, how are we going to address that? Our rides-to-wellness is one. The other is one that we had some years ago when the senior millage was passed. We had a service called Senior Care. It was a door-to-door service. We were able to do that for a period of time, but because of some funding changes that took place, our part went away. And we're going to reintroduce something of that nature. I really think it's important that we find service that better meets the needs of our seniors, veterans, obviously those with disabilities. But with seniors, you want to do some special things. And Ellen was at a meeting that she heard us talking about those. And we want to find out what will work and what really takes care of your shopping, your medical, many of those other things. And also, at the same time, there are many activities in the community that we should make transportation valuable so our seniors can go to the Whiting Auditorium, they can go to all the different events going on. So, when we started with the trolleys in Fenton, the idea is to have at least 30 trolleys countywide. And what we want to do with those trolleys is this, is that we want to work with the local DDA or whatever that body is, and we want to let them help us figure out how to make the trolleys so they work for you. When you have an activity going on, you have a fair going on, things that go on in your community, it gives some entertainment value, but it also gives you some say-so over how things work. So, it's going to take a while before we get all those trolleys. You may have had a chance to see the red, white, and blue trolleys we have. I had some given to me by a friend out of California. They were the old green models, one of which unfortunately burned up. But we're bringing in new ones. We've got three more on the way. And we're really excited. But what I want to come up tonight and say to you is that, you know, we want to work really closely with Lyndon and every other jurisdiction to determine what kind of service would best fit your community. It's not going to be about us just saying, these are the services available. It's that partnering for you to tell us and help us understand, what do you really need and how can we deliver it? You know, it's, there are many challenges, but as I mentioned earlier, I've been to the White House. I sat in the White House and they talked about our medical service. And they couldn't believe it. They said, "It's hard to believe that you have a service that is working that well. And why don't we do it all over the country?" And I said, "I can't speak for other areas. We should all be proud of what we have." This year, we'll have about 150,000 medical trips that are provided on that service, just that service alone. And, you know, people continue to use it. We have, in the community, we have 30 contracts to partner. One of those contracts deals with veterans and we're going to expand that. But today, we take veterans to Ann Arbor, Detroit, Saginaw. We take them where they need to go to get to their appointments. And by the way, when we're there in Ann Arbor, we wait for them. They don't have to go all day long, stay 10, 12 hours, ask a neighbor, ask a relative. So, I just want to let you know, and, you know, I know you have other things on the agenda, so I won't carry on, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. And I do want to tell you that we're going to be working extremely hard to partner with you to develop service that is you. I want to make sure you have world-class service out here. So, I'll answer your questions, Jeff.
Thank you very much, Chris. Councilwoman Simon.
Thank you very much. This is very interesting. I've seen the trolleys and I've always wondered what was going on with the medical aspect. And surprised and delighted to find out that we're number-one in the country because that's one of the most critical things we can do for our seniors. So, I really like that. And as far as a need for services, I think that's just something we're going to have to think about. Have to do some type of investigating, looking at that to answer that question. And thanks for your presentation.
Thank you. I will mention that when we take them to their medical appointments, if they need to go get their prescriptions underway, or go shopping, we do that also. And we wait for them, so.
Very nice.
Councilman Hicks.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Very exciting. I want to read more about it. Enlighten me and develop my eyes. I've got a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Lee.
Thank you for coming in. I think the, probably the best opportunity for us to figure out how we can best team up is to get with, you know, places like Chiawassee Shores, here at LOC Center, to find out exactly what needs we have so that we can present those to you and come up with a, you know, a joint effort to try to meet the needs of the people that need the transportation, so.
One thing I will mention is that we're still hiring, we like to hire low. So, people say, "Well, what's the age?" And I say, "Well, you can talk to our nearly 80-year-old driver and he'll tell you he loves what he's doing or she's doing." And so, we are hiring. So, when we come to your community, if you have individuals that want to be a part of this, like on the medical trips, most of those are civilians or they're SUVs. And, you know, people are driving, taking people to their medical appointments. And it's just a wonderful service.
Councilwoman Hall.
So, how does the city, how would our LOC Center here, how would they work with you on getting busing for an event? Just call or just?
We have an individual that handles that and I can have her contact the LOC Center here and get you the information. Because, you know, that's exactly what we can do is we'll make sure we get you to your events. Now, if you all decide to go to the casino, you can't take it. That's where you go to the casino. That's where you go to the casino. But we certainly can work with you. And there are many opportunities today that really are not being addressed. We work closely with FIM, with Whiting and Petalina on our basis. And we says, "Hey, let's partner seniors that come to our events."
Is there a cost to, would there be a cost to the senior center or is that provided?
There's a cost that is developed as part of our, today, it's $25, $25 cents each way, okay, for our normal Your Ride service or for a fair. But those can be worked through the city. They may be arranged through that, they may be other ways. And as a group, we have, you know, some opportunity there too. So, we don't need to charge everybody on board. We just need to make sure that it would keep sustaining, that's all.
And if another organization in the city wanted to work with you, you know, like Happening or just, I'm just saying that for, just to name some, or whatever, they could work that out with you too? It's not just like the senior center?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just to add on some things, we actually have a contact that we work directly with at MTA. And they've actually worked with us to take us to events in Flint and different things. So, we have a really good relationship and they have serviced us before. And I know in the past, they've serviced, I think, Happening in Lyndon, but Brad could speak to that further. But, so we try to take advantage of all of the services that they have to offer as much as possible, so.
And I will tell you that we hired people today and the expectation is they'll work five days. But about three days into it, they say, "I really only want to work three days." "Just send me your check to my home and I'll just stay home." So, we have those challenges. But at the same time, we have many great people. We have 700 employees. And with 700 employees, we're fortunate. We have some really great people. But like every employer today, there are challenges. What people tell you, "Well, I really thought I was being hard to work part-time." Their idea of part-time is two days a week sometimes, so.
So, what is required for a person to work for you? What is the requirement, drivewise, just a CDL?
If it's a car, there's not a CDL requirement. If it's a 50-passenger vehicle, there's a CDL requirement. We can help individuals with that. And we have many people face something real quick and comical. I was at Myers in line. A lady came over. She watched me on TV when I said, "Hey, I need help." When I get back to my office, she came over and said, "Do you see the man standing there two aisles over?" I said, "It's my husband. Would you hire him?" We're looking for drivers. We have many cars. We have well over 100 cars in Ann Arbor.
Councilman Dick.
And that is true. As Councilor Howes said and suggested, Happening in Lyndon works with MTA every year to ride shuttles at the Christmas parade. We bring 5,000 people to town here on Your Ride shuttles for us at numerous locations. We've been doing that for about seven years now. It's been a pretty good partnership. How many riders are, is the Fenton Your Ride hub servicing nowadays, you know?
I'd have to get the number because we have it in so many different portions of the panel. Your Ride would have a rides-to-wellness service that is on the group activities. We certainly get that number for you.
I was in Grand Rapids at the MML convention over last week and with Moikart from Fenton. And we were talking, we were talking about the medical rides and after we were talking with a city councilor from Birmingham, Oakland County's John Jaws.
Wow.
So, good job.
I first want to thank you for coming out here today. Thank you so much for taking your time and explaining your services to the residents. I have a couple of quick questions. So, the first part is, is I would love to see more availability of MTA for our senior center here to bring people in, to take them to the pharmacy, to take them shopping. Is that whatever the needs here are, since this is kind of a hub, I would really like to see that.
Okay.
Probably in addition to others, but that is, that one to me is key, especially as we move into winter. So, I was going through the numbers. I did my research here. And $174,000, we did, last year on the millage, the city of Lyndon contributed to this millage through their tax dollars. Can you, what does the city of Lyndon uniquely and specifically get for their $174,000?
Well, we have Your Ride service. We have rides-to-wellness service. We have access for those that work, that need transportation, that can go and access jobs not only here in Genesee County and outside because we go to six other counties. So, we have a combination of services. I think if anything, there's an underutilization of service. And as you were talking about the center, if we were to provide more service for the seniors at the center, obviously, that's going to bring that number up. And that's really why we're talking about this. How can we better utilize the services so that you're getting a better return on service?
Got a couple more. Okay. So, Fenton Hub, who does that serve as far as municipalities?
With the city of Fenton and you're talking about service related to the trolley and that.
No. So, as far as the Your Ride?
You're talking about the Your Ride service.
Either Your Ride, yes, yes.
Yeah, the service center there serves the city of Fenton, Fenton Township, city of Lyndon. And sometimes we're asked to go into Oakland County, but we don't, we're out.
Okay.
But basically, those are the.
Okay. Not Argentine then?
Yes, Argentine.
Argentine?
Argentine, there again, there's underutilization. We need to just work with Argentine because there could be needs there that we could be addressing. And we recognize like Montrose and like out in Otisville, some of those remote areas, we have to spend a little more time figuring out where we can help people.
And this is just from my knowledge so that we know whether, how to get this out to the public more, okay? So, I can answer Brad's question. There were 3,675 out of the Your Ride Fenton Hub last year in 2024. So, I would love to know how many of those were from the city of Lyndon so that that way we can know what kind of services we should be looking at providing and how to get it out there, maybe more, so that it's more utilized.
Sure.
And I don't know if you all have the answer to this, but out of those 3675, how many of those are repaid customers and how many are unique? Does that, like, first-time customers?
Well, we can get you that information.
Okay.
I will tell you that that number is far under what we're actually doing out there.
Okay.
That's more typical of what we do in a lot of places.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll get you some information.
I would appreciate it because I had gotten that compiled. It was sent to me from someone that's on the board.
Okay.
And so, that was the best that I, information that I could get.
Yeah, you know, there again, the reason that we want to work with each municipality is that we feel that there's a lot more opportunity to use services. We need to partner to figure out how better to use those services. When the senior millage was passed, we actually provided, today we do, at Carmen Aceworth, we just met with the group of Carmen Aceworth. They're one of the groups that continues to have a vehicle of ours and a driver. And the, early on, when we had the senior millage, we actually had drivers that we were replacing with vehicles. And I think at one point, we actually had one for LOC. I don't know, we're very involved, so we need to take a real look at that. You know, like yourself, I'm a taxpayer. And I want to make sure that I get out of my taxes, I get a great return. It's a reason that with my years in business, I understand we need to do a great job making sure that we're all in and how we're spending money and what you get.
I appreciate that very much.
And I've served on one of these boards, 19 years. I've more than one board. So, I really respect where you're at, okay?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Madam Mayor, really quickly, I think it might be helpful. The mayor and I have had a lot of different conversations about MTA because it's something that she feels strongly about within the city of Lyndon. And in the last meeting that I was at with you, you explained about some other services that you do for getting individuals to jobs in other counties and things like that. Because that's one of, one of the things, I think, that you basically had questions about, was how you're seeing MTA in other jurisdictions that are not necessarily paying. So, I thought it was helpful and maybe tonight, when we've got you, maybe explain that to the residents and the council about your services that kind of cross over into other jurisdictions and how that works and stuff.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
1997, we were given a grant to start a service on Centennial County. All my dispatchers thought the bus would go off the cliff. We'd never see them again. But I convinced them to come back. We've been doing it for a number of years. We've got six counties. But we provide transportation to those counties with individuals that live here, that get access to jobs. One of which is up in Hemlock, Michigan, right now. They're looking for, I don't want to say thousands of workers, but quite a few. And we're working to develop a hub that will bring in Chiawassee, Little Pierre, Saginaw, Genesee County. And so, individuals that want to access those jobs will have hubs where you'll be able to do so. And those jobs, I think, start out at, it's either $23 or $26 an hour. And so, they're really good jobs. And so, you know, we're not trying to take people away from employers that need people here. But at the same time, if you access one of those jobs, we want to make sure you can get there.
And if I understand it right, those are contracted services, right? But those individual municipalities or jurisdictions or even employers?
Employers.
Okay.
Yeah, the employer may pay for it all or they'll pay part. Today, it's, you know, for the employers, many are willing to pay because to get the employees. But there are five different ways you can do it through IRS. An individual could have to take another pay and then they can use that as a deduction. So, it's called the commuter benefit tax. So, but yeah, we've been doing it for years after the pandemic. We were $10,000 a week. We're kind of going back, building back up. Many people returned home for jobs here. And so, now, we're kind of redeveloping this.
What are the hours of operation for MTA?
We are 5:30 AM to 11:30 PM. And then, for those going through dialysis or those special needs, we'll start earlier, not later, but earlier in the morning. So, we are working, as I talked at the meeting that Ellen was in, we're talking about developing a new service. We're not ready for it, but we'll be on-demand service so that the general public will be able to use an app just like you do with Uber and Lyft. You'll be able to use a vehicle, have a vehicle come to you and your party and take you where you need to go. You're ready to go home, you just get the app. It'll be one of the first of its kind. But we need to develop some things first to get ready for it.
Are there any further questions? Thank you again so much.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me in. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. All right. Next up is APM mosquito control report by Ben Segal.
Yeah. That's it. Robin. Ben Butcher before. Good evening, everybody. I'm here to talk about the mosquito season. We've been a longtime contractor for Lyndon City and several other municipalities here in Genesee County. I will keep it short and sweet. Chili spring, usually we start spraying the week before Memorial Day. And we did not start until the first of June this year. May was pretty chilly. May was pretty chilly. We get into summer, mid to late June, a lot of thunderstorms and a lot of heat, and it really is a rain game for mosquitoes, especially here in Genesee County. The more rain we get, the more mosquitoes we're going to have. If you get a two to three inch rain event, pretty much count on seven to ten days later, you'll have a fresh root of mosquitoes. So June and July were our busiest months by far, not only in Linden, but Burton, Mondy, Gaines, Penn, Penn City, just summer floodwater mosquitoes. Mid-August, however, dried out, early into mid-August, dried out, and we fell into a weird cool spell there at the end of August and into early September. So when August is dry and we cool down, of course, it's warmed back up now, but we really don't have any sort of activity going on right now for mosquitoes. Traps came down the fifteenth of September. We were in the single-digit counts wise. Still in the office every day, but we're just not, we're not seeing any action, which is kind of nice. We're getting summer weather without the bugs here, so we've got to enjoy it while while we got it because the snow is going to be flying soon. So by the numbers, we had twenty-nine resident calls to the office. Like I said, only two in August and no, no calls in September. So we're pretty quiet. We treated thirty-four standing water sites with two-hundred-and-thirty-one pounds of Ectobac G. I made a spelling error in here, but six-hundred-and-sixteen city catch basins were treated with natural RXRT briquettes, and there's mosquito larvae that inhabit storm drains. So every year we do that. And we treated twenty-one homes by backpack applications. You guys got a really good attendance tonight, so I just want to tell everybody, if you're having a party or a barbecue or you guys are getting bit by mosquitoes, call the office and we can come out and backpack spray for your party or any kind of event. So on that too, for homeowner tips, we find wheelbarrows, buckets, all sorts of mosquitoes breeding in little containers in the backyard, even bird baths, gutters. So just a reminder, store your containers upside down. You'd be shocked at what little amount of water can be breeding your own mosquitoes. We also test for West Nile, St. Louis, and Eastern Aquinacephilitis. We had no activity here in Linden, no actual activity in Genesee County from our tests. There was two positive birds from, for West Nile that was reported to Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. So there's more on that. The Department of Health and Human Services puts out a weekly arbovirus update. Every week throughout the summer, they do a really good job and encompasses the whole state. So if you're ever curious on that, I can get that over to you or you guys can look on your own. We sprayed two-hundred-and-thirty-five miles of roadways in the city this summer, and you can see just in that graph right there, we lit up our highest New Jersey light trap count, was two-hundred-and-sixty-four females collected on the thirtieth of June, right at the DPW on Bridge Street. So they were pretty nasty for the end of June and through the Fourth of July, really. Once we get into end of July and August, it really, you can see, it just falls right off. And that is all rainfall dependent. So I also did not include in there some good news. It's in the report that I got over to Kristen, but we're four-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-one dollars under budget this year. So that's always good. When it's dry and quiet, I don't, I'm all for spraying when they're bad and knocking them down, but when, when we don't need to be out there, I don't, we don't really like pushing it. So, but yeah, it was a pretty solid season. It was a bit of a roller coaster, and Mother Nature's helped us ease into the fall. So it's not uncommon to get a call for a football game or, or, you know, somebody's having something, we're still at the shop until the first of August. So guys, feel free to call over, and thanks for your continued business and go Lions. We've got a big game today, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, any questions from anybody? Yes, ma'am.
You're still in the office until when?
Well, October first, yeah.
Okay. You said August.
Yeah, I mean, we got, we have field techs and office staff that are, we pop in a couple of days a week, but we kind of, we're trying to shut it down. I got some hunting trips I got to get on, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any further council questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, for like parties and such, is there a fee for individuals to have some come up?
No, it's all included. Yeah, it's included in there. So we got a pretty solid product. It's a thirty-day product, so especially if we can't, for the smaller city lots where we can't really get a truck in there, it's, it works pretty good. We just ask like a three to five day heads up, you know.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Yep.
For your report.
Yep.
Up next is the proclamation for the Linden Mills Historic Society.
Madam Mayor, today comes our final presentation tonight honoring the fifty years of service by Linden Mills Historical Society. The soc, excuse me, the society has preserved and shared our community's story through exhibits, education, publications, and the sesquicentennial book, Linden Memories Past and Present. On behalf of the city and council, we extend our gratitude to the members and volunteers who have kept local history alive for the future. So Madam Mayor, I'll turn that back over to you to present the proclamation. And I think if you don't mind, would you want to present it up here? We can ask the members of the Historical Society to come up as well. So Pete. Yeah, whoever you want to bring up here with you.
Hang on, I got to do two things at once here.
How am I going to do this?
Kristen will also get a picture of you all, so just, she'll get, she's in the back there, so.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Society. Whereas the Linden Mills Historical Society was established in nineteen-seventy-five with a mission of historical preservation and education. Whereas over the course of fifty years, the Historical Society has preserved, promoted, and shared Linden's historic, our history through collection and display of valuable artifacts, photographs, documents, and addition and additional, which have been proudly displayed within their museum in the Linden Mill Building. Whereas through its exhibits, educational programs, publications, and outreach, the Historical Society has engaged citizens of all ages, fostering pride in our shared past and inspiring awe to appreciate and learn about Linden's history. Whereas the Historical Society played a pivotal role in the celebration of Linden's sesquennial in two thousand and twenty-one and put together a book entitled Linden Memories Past and Present as part of the celebration. And whereas the dedication of its membership, volunteers, and supporters has ensured Linden's legacy is preserved and the story is shared for generations to come. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth Armstrong, Mayor of the City of Linden, do hereby recognize and congratulate the Linden Mills Historical Society on its fiftieth anniversary and express our gratitude for its contributions to preserve and share the history of our community on behalf of the City of Linden and Linden City Council on this day, Monday, September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. If we could have a round of applause. And I also, I wanted to thank Brad Dick. This was Brad's idea. So I do want to make sure everybody is aware of this, this is idea.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Really quick. Please we'll have you guys kind of group up so Kristen can get a nice picture. So if some of you could kind of come in front, maybe we'll do two rows, Kristen, would that work better?
Letting go.
Okay. Is that okay?
I can also get pictures from the video screen, too.
Unless someone wants to lay in front.
Everybody has come line.
All these going to back, like here to like over here.
Oh, we'll start this.
Oh, geez.
Be able to get back.
Oh, geez. We didn't get a chair. Okay, so too. I agree. Yeah. Oh, now. You're bringing a chair. Help yourself. Come on. You sure? Wow, I'm so fine. Come on. There you go. Anybody else?
You can't see?
No, okay. All right. One, two, three.
Thank you, everyone.
It's hard getting up off the floor.
Yeah.
on to public comment. And can everybody hear me okay?
No, I don't think so. I think the ones. Well, I think, I thought it was.
I mean, unless I swallow it.
You're not amplifying. I can hear you, but you're not.
Okay. Because I'm like sort of putting it in my mouth. Thanks.
It does.
Is this better? Okay, I'm just going to really, I'm going to use my mom voice tonight, okay? All right, we're going to use the mom voice. All right, so next up is public comment. We're going to start with Surf Internet.
Lucky, let's go first, all right.
Did you lower your prices?
All right, well, I'll, I'll see you guys later now. And I will take that as feedback, so great. My name is Jordan Holzberg. I'm with Surf Internet. I'm considered what we call a market manager, and my job is really kind of in the middle of government affairs, community relationships, and you know, deal a lot with HOAs, chamber of Congress, like to come and see council at least once a year. It's been quite a while since we've been here, and that would probably have been eighteen months or so ago when we first were really starting this project. So I really just wanted to come by and introduce myself. You guys have so far been great partners to us, and we just want to make sure that we're continuing to be great partners to you guys. And if no one ever shows up or comes, you know, comes by to say hi, you probably don't know we're around. So again, we're based right out of northern Indiana in Elkhart, so we're not too far away from you guys. And we have about a hundred and twenty markets across the Midwest between the tri-state areas, Illinois, Indiana, Michigan, and about seventy thousand customers or so. We, we think that we have some of the best service out there because we're no contract, we're a price lock for life, so that's something great for your residents. And we're trying to be pretty affordable, but maybe we can look into a couple of things there, so. Couple, while I'm here, I'm just going to give you guys a little bit of stats so we can kind of level set, you know, where we're at so far. In our first initial build, we passed three thousand homes and businesses in your, in your city here, and we still have a thousand really in design or coming soon. It could be over the next twelve months or so. There was some private property and HOAs that we had to, we had to go back later after, you know, going through the public usement and get some agreements with them, so. And we, you know, roughly, it took us about, we've been active for about nine months fully. And really just, again, just wanted to come back and just make sure that we are answering all you guys' questions or concerns, yard restoration, things of that nature. We want to make sure if there is something, we are here to correct it. Any questions from anyone? No, pretty good? All right, very easy.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Hi, I just had a question if you knew when you're going to start the sidewalks on Hyatt Lane. My daughter is graduating in the spring, I'm having her open house, and I was hoping it wasn't going to be about that time when they'd be started. Because then Hyatt Lane's a small road, so planning for that, I just wondered.
And usually the, the city manager, usually at the end of all public comments, go back and address them.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Ramona D's five-zero-six North Bridge Street. When I suggested several months ago that LOCs should have a members advisory committee composed of members who frequently attend activities at LOCs, it did not occur to me that the city would want to involve outside organizations such as Southern Lakes Parks and Recreation. Having outside organizations involved will not achieve the goals that I envisioned of having more programs that seniors want and need and increasing membership of younger seniors. The Southern Lakes Parks and Recreation Board does not have the best interest of LOCs in mind. Robby was the liaison from LOCs to their board for eight years. When the Southern Lakes Park Millage was passed with the help of senior citizens, nineteen percent of the proceeds were allotted to LOCs. Southern Lakes reduced our portion of the millage several times. Some of the Southern Lakes Board members wanted to eliminate our portion altogether. Southern Lakes charges more for their classes than LOCs does and have fewer pre-activities. If they are involved on a LOC advisory committee, they might encourage LOCs to charge their higher rates, making some of our classes unaffordable for some of our members. Why are you shutting down the congregant lunches during the months of construction? Homebound seniors on the waiting list for meals on wheels depend upon the lunches. Surely you can get the kitchen at the community center inspected. Please do the right thing for those seniors.
Thank you. Robby D's?
I'm coming. All right. This microphone doesn't seem to be very effective again. The pickup is not real good. Can you hear that? Can you hear that? I'll do this. I want to talk about art. I have always loved art. I've painted crayons and mud and whatever, and I've never seen a Picasso that I liked. I've seen some graffiti in Chicago off the train that I really liked. I'm familiar with Grandma Moses, which most of you don't know, she was a woman in Vermont who painted country scenes. We've got a thing on the city hall down there that I don't like. I have nothing to do with it. Don't like it. But something's coming up, a painting at the bridge, and it's a very appropriate painting. It's just the wrong place for the painting. It's not a good place. If you go down and look from the dam towards the bridge, you can't see it. There are a couple of umbrellas sticking up and trees in the way all over the place. So who's going to benefit from a nice piece of art there? Kayakers and ducks, maybe. And if you go to the other side and put the picture down there, people going downstream are going to be looking downstream, they're not going to be looking back at the picture. Might be more appropriate to find another place, maybe out at the Triangle Park or someplace else if you want to see that thing that's going to be depicted, even though it might be free. You can stand at the dam and you can see the Cebu, and you can see the mill, and you can see the string. You don't need a picture to look at it. I'm all in favor of good art. And what I think is good art, other people might disagree. When I go to the art museum, I walk right past some things that make me want to throw up and go look at what I consider art, and it's your right to disagree with me or, everybody's got a different taste about art. I just don't want to see the city make another mistake on displaying art, even though it might be very symmetrical or nice, and some people might like it and some people don't like it. But the placement of that art, I think, is key and important for the city. And once it gets there, it's hard to get rid of. I think you've confronted trying to get rid of some arts here before, and they've been unsuccessful. Once it's there, it's there. So make a good decision about where to put it. It's very tasteful art, more tasteful than the one I'm talking about. But put it somewhere where people can see it and enjoy it, maybe over the top of that oven.
Thank you, Robby.
Monica Lerner, one-five-two West Ralston Road, Linden. So it seems that the public comments rules seem to change. It used to be we had five minutes for comments. Then it seemed we were being punished and there were no comments at all. Then it was no longer anonymous comments. However, when I submitted a comment, it was not read during the working meeting. The comments were submitted in person. I signed my name. It was not anonymous, but it was not treated the way I asked that it be treated. So a week later, even though I've only seen the email for three days, I got an email response from the city manager. This is in response to your correspondence received September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. The city prioritizes serving residents and ensuring fair treatment in all circumstances. We remain committed to addressing valid concerns when they are submitted through proper channels and presented accurately. At the same time, statements suggesting that the city or its staff are targeting you are both misleading and harmful. Such accusations do not contribute to the constructive resolution placed undue strain on staff and consume resources that should be focused on daily responsibilities and legitimate resident concerns. So it's the same, my concerns are not legitimate. There's been a long history of my concerns, starting from building events, the special assessment, trespassing, chicken ordinance, those are just a few. So I don't think that, you know, this fair treatment is being passed around as they think it's being passed around. So I do have comments on the chicken ordinance, and I have to do that later, correct? One last comment. So there's been police cars, I mean, across, directly across from my house for multiple days in September. It is a concern for my husband, being a disabled, that PTSD trigger. And it's not just for a few minutes, it's for hours on end. So I have to keep him away from that specific trigger. One last one, West Ralston Road and Bridge Street had. West Ralston Road and Bridge Street had, um, road right-of-way signs, um, for five days. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we're going to move on to...
You want me to try to answer any of them? Okay. Um, so, um, back to the safe routes to school. So, um, as I communicated in my update to council, but Stephanie, it's, it is still scheduled to happen this fall.
Okay.
Um, but, but again, I mean, we are at the, you know, nearing the end of September, so, um, we'll work, just let us know, shoot me an email, let us know when your, when your event is for next year. It'll be something that I'll have, um, our staff and our engineers just be mindful of and things like that. So, um, once a project gets going, it should be pretty straightforward and go pretty quickly. Fingers crossed. So, um, stay tuned for more on that. But it is still slated, according to M.D., it's still happening yet this fall. So, really quick, I didn't mean to jump over here to Jordan. Thank you for being here, and we're happy. Share anything, information that you want at city hall and things like that and stuff, and we're happy to get that out to our residents and stuff. Really quick, Ramona, on the advisory committee. So it's really important for us, and I think I would explain this before, that when Linden took over the, um, LOC Center, it's really important for us for everyone to realize that it's not just centralized for the city of Linden residents. Everyone in Genesee County pays into the senior village. And, um, at the previous, the previous board, and Robie, you can speak to this, existed with two Southern Lakes Parks and Rec members, two Tyrone Township members who didn't even pay into Genesee County taxes, as well as outside of City of Linden. So when we talked about the advisory board moving forward, we just wanted to make sure that we had representation from those within our jurisdiction that utilize LOC, whether they be Fenton City, Fenton Township, Argentine Township, and things like that. Nothing's been finalized at all. But to clarify, it's not just giving Southern Lakes a seat at the table. Southern Lakes has just asked that that's something that we do as well. And I think that we've been able to build back our relationship with Southern Lakes Parks and Rec. And I guess, uh, you know, Councilor, uh, Simons and Madam Mayor, you could maybe speak to that as you sit on the Southern Lakes Parks and Rec Board. So we've just tried really, really hard to make sure that our surrounding jurisdictions know that this is not something just exclusive to Linden. And we want to hear those voices of those people that are utilizing the center as well. So it impacts a lot of people. Most of the people in Genesee County, um, all pay into the senior village and things like that. So just to clarify that as well. The congregate meals, so our project is a renovation for the annex, and it is going to disrupt some congregate meals. I know Tessa and Dottie and all of them that are involved in that are working to try to minimize the impact as much as possible and to, you know, do as much as they can to hopefully offset that. Or if there's someone that is in great need of those, those meals, to pair them up with those services. And if there's anything that they can do to adjust, they certainly will. Robie, appreciate your comments on the mural, I think to help clarify. And also, um, I don't want to be insulting of those that have done the work on city hall as well. I was not at the city when the mural went on the side of city hall. But I know that when I first started, people feel very, very passionately about the artwork that's there. And it was done in conjunction with the younger elementary grade students at, as the art teachers at Linden, Linden. So, um, as Robie said, art is subjective. So I'll leave that one there. The owners at Bridge Street Boutique, who is adjacent to the bridge, they are the ones that are actually bringing this application forward for the mural. It came before council as a courtesy because it obviously is, uh, you know, city infrastructure. They went before the HGC as well. It's a project that they're trying to do for the community that also enhances their area, but the entire downtown, if you're sitting down at the amphitheater and stuff, something uplifting, something fun and things like that. I don't think, uh, I think they've, they've shown, and Kristin, maybe you can speak to this better than I can. I think they've shown that they're willing to hear, uh, you know, feedback and consider different options for their art and things like that. So nothing has been decided in full, but appreciate the feedback on that. Ms. Lerner, again, thank you for your comments. I can't necessarily speak to how your public comment was handled at the last meeting. We were advised, uh, you know, to put it on the record. It came in the day of the meeting. Uh, I think you dropped it off to Kristin specifically. And my response was in regards to, we've, we've attempted multiple times and multiple ways to try to answer a lot of your concerns and questions. If I, it comes, it's typically not ever met with any resolution from your perspective. And so that letter was to address, I mean, in your letter, you specifically said we were targeting and harassing. Um, and so that's frustrating from my perspective, as we're trying to manage the city from a day-to-day. And, uh, my police are very professional, and I can let Chief Sutter speak to that specifically. Uh, we've tried to answer the question specific to the chicken ordinance, pass zoning requests. I, I know Don, in multiple ways, has communicated, um, specifically to West Ralston Road Project, specific to your property, and any other Public Works concerns. Um, so I'm happy at this point, you know, to allow council to maybe address it. Maybe you guys will have a different result, and, um, I do appreciate it. And again, my comment was, I'm happy to hear concerns and issues if they're based in factual information. Thank you. I think that's really all I have.
Move on to the consent agenda.
I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. Support?
Dick?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Armstrong?
No. Yes.
Motion here.
Unfinished business. Item A, ordinance number 421, and ordinance amending chapter 90 animals.
Madam Mayor and City Council, ordinance 421 is in front of you. It's been, um, this is something that you guys have all talked about many times, um, at previous meetings as recent as our September 8 meeting. Um, and just to quickly review, this is updating our current animal code to reflect the community's interest in small-scale backyard chickens, always still maintaining clear standards and health and neighborhood compatibility. So the biggest changes, um, we are, and Adam's here too, to hopefully answer any questions. And this is a reflection of all of the feedback that we've received to date, okay? So addresses where and how many chickens, based on the lot size, addresses, the permitting, um, as, uh, a zoning permit is required with a simple sketch showing the coop location, things like that. Separation of pens and yards, no less than seventy-five feet, correct? And then a ten-yard, seventy-five feet from any existing dwelling or building, and then not less than ten feet from any property line. So that was discussed most recently. In your packet as well, you have a map, um, that exhibits, kind of gets you a visual to help kind of show. And Adam can explain that further, so with that, I'll turn it over to you all too.
Councilman Hicks, you have any questions?
I think, uh, I think Adam showed everything on the, on the map, I think, thank you for the work.
Councilwoman Howard?
I, I think this is what we've discussed, and, and I think, uh, the change and the verbiage is appropriate. So no other questions. Thank you for attending, Adam.
Councilman Link?
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Howe?
It contains all our changes as we had talked about in the past, or the past meeting, and so I have no further comment.
Councilman Dick?
Other comments?
And I have nothing. Does anyone in the public have any comments that they would like? Mrs. Lerner, if you could come up to a mic, thank you.
So I see that you've kept the chicken ordinance based on acreage, following the city of Manchester, with their newly adopted one from June of this year. The discussions here in Linden also started in June. The city of Manchester has half the population as Linden. And since it's set up as acreage tiers, so a quarter acre getting six chickens, half acre, ten chickens, one or more gets fifteen chickens. If you're going with acreage, why are you stopping there? There are three properties just on West Ralston Road that have over five acres. Why should I be penalized for, you know, wanting more chickens? And why don't the other people that have more acreage have that right to have more chickens if they wish? There is a state representative that's introducing legislation, and it comes down to his maximum is twenty-five. I think it's already been decided, but, you know, like I said before, I say the same things over and over. But it is factual, and I don't like being, you know, called that I'm not saying factual things.
Any further comments on the chickens? Any further comments from council?
Madam Mayor. I was at, you know, mentioned, in Grand Rapids this week, and food ordinances did come up. And city chickens were a huge topic. Most municipalities have lower caps than fifteen. We've gone back and forth as a board, we've talked about chickens and how many we should have. You know, I've talked to multiple municipalities that were in the meeting that have sent it to the ballot, but they, to approve chickens in the city. But again, they're at six, no matter what, doesn't, they don't care. And most people who I talk to, you know, agree with our no rooster policy. Anybody, most of them are anywhere from six to twelve chickens. We'd be setting at fifteen. I think we're in the, we're in the right, right place right now.
Any further comments from council, questions? Is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we, um, vote on ordinance number 421 and ordinance amending chapter 90 animals.
Madam Mayor, uh, the, the motion would need to re, approving ordinance 421, um, chapter nine, amending chapter 90, keeping of chickens, or, amending chapter 90, animals keeping of chickens.
I will make a motion that we, um, pass ordinance number 421, amending an ordinance, oh, sorry, an ordinance amending chapter 90 animals. As written on our agenda.
One second.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance number 422, and ordinance amending section 154.024, 154.231 through 154.232 zoning ordinance planning commission.
Madam Mayor, I think I'll let Adam, do you want to take it away, Adam, for this one?
Well, this is coming from the planning commission after holding a public hearing with a recommendation that he would approve the amendments to the zoning ordinance. It's related to two items. First, reducing the number of site plan copies, hard copies, that would need to be submitted to the city for projects that are appeared before the planning commission. Currently, the number in the zoning ordinance is twelve. We simply don't find the need to, to require twelve hard copies, twenty-four by thirty-six sets, which can get pretty lengthy and pretty costly. Uh, we only really need three. It's one, really one or two for the file, one kind of for distribution across, uh, the departments. So the recommendation there is to reduce it to three. And then a couple of other instances, modifying the planning commission membership officers and rules to either, uh, in most cases, it's to change it in accordance with state law. Uh, one is how a planning commission member can be removed from office. It's updating it to the most current legal terminology that the Planning and Zoning Enabling Acts stipulate. It's also to specify the number of meetings per minimum that need to be held by the planning commission each year. Uh, that is four per the, uh, Planning Enabling Act. And then also to indicate that the planning commission provides annually a report to the city council of their activities. That's also a requirement of the Planning Enabling Act. So really, we're just updating the zoning ordinance as it relates to the planning commission to be more consistent with state law and our current practices. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
Any residents have any questions on this?
Madam Mayor, really quick, in addition, I put in my update that this, in October, we're actually going to be holding a public hearing for the housing zoning amendment. So just to clarify any confusion with that, that this has nothing to do with that, that's something separate and coming in October.
Thank you. Councilman Link?
I have no questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Howe?
Um, Adam, can, you said that you want to change it to three copies instead of twelve, which is commendable, and it saves paper and print and all the, all the rest. Can it be, could it be, can they be submitted electronically?
Uh, and we ask for them to be submitted electronically, yes.
Because so many state reports now are submitted electronically, you know, and it saves a lot of paper and a lot of waste.
We still do have a couple of holdups who'd like to see the paper versions, including a couple in the departments who'd like to see that paper version. Uh, we do like to have one for the file for purposes of record as well.
The beauty of the electronic version, though, is that it can't be altered any way. It is as it is presented, so.
I'm sold.
Yeah, me too, it saves a lot of paper. It's a lot of trees you're going to save.
Councilman Dick?
No comments, questions?
No questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Howard?
Nothing in addition, thank you for bringing it forward.
And I have nothing in addition, thank you.
We just need a motion to approve ordinance 422, amending the zoning sections.
I will make a motion that we, um, pass ordinance number 422 and ordinance amending sections 154.024, 154.231 through 154.232.
Support.
Lee?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Simons?
Yes.
Next up, we have the conditional rezoning request for 210 Oak.
This is a conditional rezoning request submitted by a property owner, and the applicant is Debbie Cameron. She's here this evening, seeking a rezoning of her property, 210 Oak Street, from the R3, single-family residential district to the R4, multiple-family residential district. Uh, she, in exchange for the rezoning, has voluntarily offered in writing, uh, conditions related to the use and development of the land if rezoned. Specifically, that that property will only be used as a triplex. Uh, that is the current use of the property presently. Um, no other uses under the R4 district zoning would be allowed on the property except for a triplex or duplex or single-family dwelling. Uh, but she would still retain the right to, uh, use property in the future for any of the uses under the current R3 district. So that, a public hearing was held, the planning commission recommended acceptance of her conditions, and it is from, in front of the city council for your final action and authority for that rezoning. Uh, we've also submitted, and the attorney has reviewed, a statement of conditions that's required by the zoning ordinance for any conditional rezoning. So that statement is a recordable document so that, um, of course, Ms. Cameron and future property owners are aware of that restriction that would be placed on that property. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
Are there any resident questions on 210? Where is this property?
Uh, it's 210 Oak Street. It's two ten Oak Street.
Background on this property was multifamily being used, it's existing non-conforming use. The applicant wanted to change it to R four so she could actually get a mortgage on it.
I have no questions.
Councilwoman Simon?
Thanks for sharing all the information. We have everything we need. And if there are any other questions?
Councilman Link?
I have no questions.
Councilwoman Howard?
No questions.
And I have no questions. Is there a motion on the conditional rezoning request?
I will give a motion for the conditional rezoning request at two ten Oak Street.
Support.
We do have a sample motion. Does that happen? Yeah. Page two of Adam's letter, is that what you wish to approve? I just want to make sure that we're clear with the expectation with this being a conditional rezoning, so. So, Adam prepared just a sample motion for adoption tonight for you all. Would be on page thirty-four of your packet, it looks like.
Sorry about that.
You're fine.
In consideration?
Yes.
Okay. Motion in consideration of the planning commission recommendation of adoption and agreement of the planning commission finding that the request satisfies the review standards of section one fifty-four, point two three one E for the city of Linden's zoning ordinance. I move to adopt the conditional request submitted by property owner Deborah Cameron to rezon two ten Oak Street from the R three, single-family residential district to the R four, multi-family residential district. A further move that the conditions offered by the application be incorporated into the signed statement of condition accepted to this city attorney.
Support.
Simon's?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
No.
Link?
No.
Hicks?
Yes.
Armstrong?
No.
All right. Two, three, three. Motion fails. Tie.
Adam or Trey Gilder?
Motion fails.
So, now we are moving on to the city manager update.
So, I sent out an update last week with project updates on West Ralston Road. They're working on the punch list of stuff right now. Linden Mill Pond Walkway project substantially complete, again, working on punch list. If you all have seen it maybe firsthand or have been able to see the pictures that we have out on social media as well, it's, it looks beautiful. I know that many people are happy with it and it's just a great addition or improvement to the downtown. Continuing to work on the CDBG, ADA, amphitheater and gazebo overlook projects. We do have the bids in for that, for the ADA compliant platforms. I talked about this a couple of meetings ago, that this is something that they have, the city applied for back in, I think, twenty nineteen, and it comes in three-year cycles. So, it's been a long time since that project has been discussed, but it's finally coming forward with the funding this year. So, hopefully have that information back to you guys to, to act on. I included in my update as well, all the bid specs and stuff like that. Hopefully have that back to you guys in October. Again, St. Rock's to school is still hopefully happening this fall, fingers crossed. We did just receive the approved co-fertility permit from Eagle for the mill, and we're working on scheduling a groundbreaking ceremony and things like that, once we know and have further information from Cunningham Wimp. We didn't want to have too long of a start date from groundbreaking to them actually breaking ground on the mill, so looking forward to that. Working on the Losi Annex remodel project as well. Last Thursday, we had a meeting with county and case construction to get that moving forward. West Broad Street rehabilitation project, we're still working with MDOT to get that. It looks like that's going to flow into next year, and that's a simple mill and resurface and any, anything like underground structures or ADA that would need to be addressed during that time would hopefully be addressed. That was through tip funding and small urban funding that we get from the state of Michigan that's funneled down through the county. Hydrant flushing is coming up, October sixth through the twelfth. I think I addressed the suspicious emails. Just be vigilant about that, just maybe look at the sender. I know there was a lot of emails circulating that had spoofed, it looked like some of the councilors and the mayor, just look at the physical email because it was not a legitimate email, just with the name. So, just look at that. Our, we've talked to our IT about it and things like that, they're aware of it. Chief Sutter did, in that same update, put together a memo on deer population and things like that, following our last work session and concerns of that. That information's out there. Again, he's here, if you guys would like to address that further, his memo. We're still, we're, our BSN A transition is technically official. Today, I really was working in the program a lot, and so a little bit of a learning curve, even though we've had all kinds of trainings, but it's going well. So, the next thing that we've got to work on is upgrading, like I said, from our Windows ten support by October first, because we have some systems that would no longer be supported and things like that, working on server. We're doing audit field work, our auditor has been out on site last week, working through that. Chief, I think, are they done with the film, the filming in Eagles Wood and Park? I think they were supposed to be done last week, right? Okay. So, that wrapped up. I know that we did receive some complaints. Chief had addressed that with those that had applied for the use of public space permit. Homecomings this Friday. The firearm, the firearm sales business, there's, looks, sounds like there's been some confusion as to what that is, and, and again, Adam and Brad could probably speak to this even more in detail. But the planning commission reviewed and approved a preliminary site plan for a proposed firearm sales business at two oh eight Lindenwood. And the approval, the approval was very strict conditions on that, you know, no inventory may be stored at the residence, no firearm transfers are permitted on the premises, all sales must be conducted online. So, there's not an exchange there, there's not like just a, a business on site right there, it's all online sales and nothing coming to and from that I'm aware of, right? Adam or Brad took anything further on that? Again, I think I spoke to the zoning amendments earlier. I did put in there a link to the Genesee District Library Board seats, there's two more seats available. So, there's a link to anybody that'd like to apply. Obviously, our community event's coming up and our downtown day, and hopefully some of you guys got to see, we got to take over the Michigan Downtown Association, all of their social media to get Linden out there. Tessa did a great job on those videos and stuff, so that was exciting. It was a good showcase to our, our community, I feel. And Losi's Got Talent was a huge success. I, I think that it was well-attended. I did not get to be there a part of it, but I know some of you guys actually were participants in it and enjoyed that evening as well. And then our downtown day coming up, September twenty-seventh as well. And in addition, just, just something to add on to the public comment, Monica, I'm happy to have a conversation and us trying to come to some resolution on, on your concerns. I think the information that I provided is the factual information, is when you're saying that we're targeting harassing in regards to your specific situation, it just makes it tough to find any resolution at any point. So, again, I'm happy to sit down and talk with you about your specific concerns. I know that we've explained it and you've had multiple emails back and forth with Donna and stuff like that, so those answers are pretty clear, but I'll leave it at that. If you guys would like something different, please communicate about, so.
And the city attorney update?
Nothing else.
All right. Thank you for the department reports. Appreciate those. And now, we're going to go to council comments and reports. And we will start with Councilwoman.
So, the first thing that I have tonight is I did attend the Losi Talent Show. It was really great. Wow. They, they really had a good time, nice sense of community and the staff was amazing. They did a fantastic job, so I wanted to, to make sure that that was noted. And as far as Southern Lakes and Parks and Rec, I'm a commissioner on the board and I, I know it's been mentioned publicly quite a few times that the board is delighted with the changes at the Losi Senior Center and happy to support at every opportunity as they have been in the past. We are still looking for a director of those Southern Lakes, Parks and Rec. Resumes are being reviewed now, and we hope to have someone in place by the end of the year. Our current director is graciously offered to stay until this person is thoroughly trained, so we're really excited about having a new director. And if you have any questions, the board does meet the, it's the third Friday of every morning at seven-thirty in the morning.
This Friday?
This Friday, yes. And we're meeting this Friday. Thank you. That's it.
Councilman Hicks?
Just a couple of quick things. At the HDC meeting on Wednesday, it was exciting, there's going to be a couple of projects, some of the local businesses are going to do some faceliftings and painting and stuff, so it'll just improve the downtown nicely. The Masonics is going to get new front glass and, glass and doors, everything up front, which I think will really let that blend in, everything real nice out there. But other than that, everybody, the meeting was uplifted and things are, are coming to town, they're, they're going to be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dick?
As you know by now, I was at the OML conventions this week, so a lot of good things coming out of there. Obviously, their, their first session that they had, what did you think you were getting into as a public servant? So, it was very interesting, the powers and pitfalls of leading a community. And, you know, redefining community, people, purpose and place, that's another thing for us, it's kind of like thinking, where do you, where do people gather in Linden? You know, to try to improve on a gathering area and work on that area. And we kind of have been with the amphitheater in downtown area, so we're working on that. Robing murals were also a big consideration. There are some towns that are doing some great things. Check out Rogers City, they've got some phenomenal murals up there in a very small city.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, working, you know, the general sessions, working beyond budgeting and sparking new change in real time, break out sessions, you know, civility in your community, can we agree to disagree? And their attorneys went through that quite well, and there were some great comments from the community, and there are some places that are, they get some YouTube videos out there and they're actually monetizing them, so we need to, need to check in. That's how bad they are. Thriving Communities for Thriving Michigan. I'm going to send all these links out, all the, all the materials available, I'm going to send the links out to Kristin, so she can forward it over, over to councils and go through, and if there's something we want to go to, go through in depth at a work session, we can work on that. But all in all, it was a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Howard?
It was a pleasure to participate with the Losi Has Talent Show, especially to be accompanied by Ramona, because she did a fabulous, really nice job for my two sons. I really appreciate Ramona. And, and I loved your harmonica robi, that was awesome. I have a, a couple of updates. Parks and Rec's owl walk was phenomenal. We had over eighty people and some think we, Sadie thought we had maybe a hundred, it was phenomenal. And it just tells us that people give a whoop about their city and their owls, and so we should do this again at a, maybe a better time, at maybe later fall and when, because the problem was it was still light out and the kids, bless them, but were saying, "Mom, when are we going to see owls?" You know, of course, we didn't see any owls, but it was a lot of fun. It was adorable watching the kids. At the Genesee County Metropolitan Alliance meeting, planning, we talked about the safe streets and we talked about how cities have to upgrade their, their roads to maybe state highway worth of state highway dollars and, and Ellen assured me beforehand, Silver Lake Road is already, that's already been done for Silver Lake Road, and you're going to love this, but they're going to do roundabout education, how to drive through a roundabout. Now, that wasn't really discussed in depth about how they're going to do it, but they are going to do it, so, you know, every little bit helps. Education and safety first, right? And then I have a question for Ellen, I mean, maybe it's actually for Don, but you, you probably know. On, on the, Don's report, the DPW report, since you had to, for Eagles to satisfy, satisfy the permit, you had to relocate the freshwater mussels that you were found there, which actually, the list is really impressive. You know what that indicates? The fact that they found freshwater mussels in the Chaiwasi River is the water quality is excellent. Otherwise, they wouldn't be surviving there. So, if anybody has any questions about water quality, I can tell you firsthand, it's excellent because there were five different species of mussels native to Michigan, not like zebra mussels or those Puenga mussels that are invasive species. These were our own freshwater mussels. I'm, I'm really impressed. What did you do with them?
So, OHM actually was the one that did the reconnaissance survey. They were, I, I think we were all surprised that they, it didn't seem like those, the water and the sediment below the dam was conducive to that, the endangered species, but they did find them, but they did relocate them, and I apologize, Pam, I don't know.
Oh, it's okay.
But they are required to relocate them in the same similar environment, so.
Right.
But it was enough to satisfy the requirements of the co-fertility. Yeah. Cool. That's it.
Councilman Link?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, Chief, I would like to say thank you for the officers on Ralston Road. I know there's some, some issues with where they're parked, but it has made a difference in the speeding. I noticed when, when we first got the road finished, it, you know, it was like the autobahn going up down there. And then with the sign being there, and I know there was the officers parked down at my end of the street as well, but overall, I think that was very helpful because I've noticed a definite slowdown. So, so I do appreciate that. Onto the, the deer report, there was a couple of things on that one. I, I believe that this is somewhat of an issue, that the deer to car accidents, I think, is not a major issue. I know in the statistics that you provided, it was, I assume it was for the number of cars that traveled through the city through the entire day, where deer movement, ninety percent of your traffic's probably, when the deer are, you know, sleeping during the day. But also, I, I, I don't know that accidents in a twenty-five mile an hour zone with deer are as, as common as, say, fifty-five or some of those roads, but I think something else to look at with the, the issue with the deer population is the destruction of people's properties as far as people planting gardens, flowers. I know a lot of people have issues with that happening. I know all, you know, there's not a easy solution to get rid of them, hiring a, a sharpshooter. I don't think you want any shooting done in the, in the city limits, you know, but trapping would also be extremely expensive, but if, I, I would like to discuss some way to, that we can work at limiting the number of deer in the city. I know in my house, quite a few of the neighbors, you know, they plant, my wife spends a lot of money planting flowers and the deer seem to love to eat them. So, you know, that's a, I think that's a problem around the city. I don't know how we address it, but I, I, I think it, you know, it's something I would like to discuss, maybe bring it up at a work session, but I know a lot of people have a lot of damage if, you know, there's a lot of financial burden on people. They go out, spend time and money on these flowers and, and gardens and stuff, and then the deer come in and wipe them out overnight. So, I would like to look maybe a little bit further on, is there a way we can get rid of the deer, do it safely, and, and just, you know, reduce their numbers, so. But, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. I agree. Okay. And I've got a couple of things tonight. First up, kind of like our city manager had said, there are two positions on the Genesee County Library Board that are currently open. So, if you love your library and you want to be a bigger part of the library as a whole, you can contact the city hall.
But, you know, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. And I've got a couple of things tonight. First up, kind of like our city manager had said, there are two positions on the Genesee County Library Board that are currently open. So if you love your library and you want to be a bigger part of the library as a whole, you can contact the city hall. Is that appropriate, city hall for details?
Yeah, I think the best bet would just be to go to... We can share the link out.
Okay.
We'll share that out and stuff, and that's... It goes directly to Genesee County. I think they can find it if they go to their site, too.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Then, so I am on an organization called Small Cities, and we have been... I put myself on that because I had one thing in mind, and that was I wanted to really look at our millages and make sure that we are, as residents, getting the most out of possible out of our millages. And so there are... There is one millage coming up next year for renewal, and it is a library board millage. And so that is the one that I looked at first. And so currently, Small Cities is going to be working as a group, speaking to the library board, speaking to different, whether it be the county, all sorts of different... We have different mechanisms that we are going to be utilizing, also looking at the contract for the library. I will say that currently, there is a substantial amount of money sitting in an unreserved fund. That is the first thing I think we want answers as Small Cities, as to what is that money? That is not part of their budget. Their budget is already good to go. This is separate. So we would like to know what that is for. That is number one. And then we would like to see what we can do coming to the table, whether that is help with our city getting a percentage of that, those funds for our municipal library and the other 18 municipal libraries, or lowering the millage, or renegotiating our contract. Because currently, what goes on is the residents of the city of Linden pay a millage to Genesee County, and that millage covers a librarian, and it covers books. The residents of the city of Linden cover the building, they cover the lights, the water, the everything else, as well as the janitorial, the cleaning services. And I am not anti-library. I'm very much for library. And because I am very much for library, I want to make sure that the 19 municipal libraries have a way to fund themselves that is not residents paying twice for the exact same service. And so this is something that I am very, very passionate about. I hit the ground running with it immediately upon going into Small Cities, and I will continue, millage by millage, to be looking at these items and finding how we, as Linden, what we're considered out county, can make sure that we're getting the best utilization of our millage dollars. So I wanted to... I haven't said anything until I was pretty sure we're moving forward now with it, so I have waited to speak on that. One of the other things I would like to just see on the work session next month, if we could possibly bring up the dementia-friendly, PTSD-friendly, and age-friendly city information that I had brought back from Michigan Association of Mayors Conference, which is the training for whomever would like to take it to make us friendly, you know, to all, all those listed. So I would like to see if we can talk about that and maybe have the AARP come in, if that's possible, to discuss it. Thank you. And then number... Well, my last one. I would like to apologize to Mrs. Lerner for making your public comment a correspondence. I'm sorry if you did not feel heard. Thank you. And that is all I have. So unless there is anything else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Support.
If there's any students, you may bring your patients up here. Thank you very much. Good day.